Are we ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of McCandless Planning Commission meeting for December 2023. We have one, two items on the agenda. And let's start with the first one, which is the Schultz Ford Lincoln EV dealership issue. And we're, we have a continued discussion from the last time. So you're on.
Good evening. Steven Victor, Victor Wetzel Associates. Last month, my associate David Lucci was here. And the discussion I think was primarily on the subject of the modifications. We were told that we needed two modifications. I didn't know if you wanted to bring that plan up.
Getting it right now.
Thank you.
Did the screenshot? Not the screen that I wanted. Just kidding. Just looked a lot like a plan.
Oh, the good old days when you brought your own drawings and easels.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Fail safe.
Wait for me. All right. This looks right?
Yes. If there were two drawings, there was one, not the set of drawings, but there were two drawings and I thought we communicated with you on that that showed from last month.
What consolidation drawing, right?
I have that as well.
Yeah.
If we, what is that?
Is that what you want to see? I didn't, I wasn't gonna, I mean, the consolidation drawings, the consolidation drawings, so it's just matter of bringing it. If you do recommend approval, then we will complete the, you know, just get it all signed and get it in approved. Just brings under one. Basically, I'll just work off this. And the
There are other drawings in the set.
There are.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've got cool.
We had two presentation drawings that dealt strictly with the with the modifications, but
Right, let's see. Keep, keep going while we have this up and I'll, I'll check and see if I got something.
At the bottom, at the bottom of our site. In the bottom of, I'll call it the T, is Ein House Drive. The review by the engineer says that all side, all streets must have sidewalks. There are no sidewalks along Ein House. It's a private street. It only serves one single family house at the end of it. Physically, we can put the sidewalk in from left to right on our property. And it would be a classic sidewalk to nowhere.
From nowhere to nowhere.
Exactly. So we're asking for a modification that that be relieved. Do you have an opinion on that? Because you didn't last month as to our modification.
We were certainly leaning to allow that modification, but we'll, we'll vote on it officially.
The second modification had to do, deal with the grading. Here again in the, I'll call the T portion of the site. That we have a geotechnical report that supports our utilizing two to one slopes. We're asking for a modification to be able to do so. The plan here shows what would happen if you have three to one slopes. And with three to one slopes, the effect is that instead of having 110 parking spaces on the property, we would have 100. So it would allow us to have the 10 additional spaces. Richard Bazey, who is the applicant here, feels very strongly about having those 10 additional spaces. He believes it's important for his facility here. I think that the safety issue is not really significant because we do two to one slopes all the time with geotechnical confirmation and we have that. So we're hoping that that modification will be granted.
One of the questions that was asked last time was how many? And how was it calculated as to how many you really needed? And there wasn't an answer to that. And our discussion at the time was that we have granted two to one slopes over three to one, or yeah, two to one over three to one in the past, but that's generally been not because it's a kind of wish I'd really like to have that. It was generally for the reason that it was needed because that's the only way you could situate the building or, you know, it, it, it was much more integral to the, to the construction of the project as opposed to gee, I'd like to have 10 more spaces. If you can address that in any way, it would be enlightening.
I, I think I really can't be any more knowledgeable than, other than Mr. Bazey's personal opinion as to having run car dealerships for years and years and given the size of the facility. If we do it simply on your parking ratios, we exceed those because your parking ratios look primarily at looking at the employees and visitor parking that would come to it. We exceed that. So what we're really talking about, how many additional spots or spaces do we need? For when we're doing maintenance on a vehicles or when we are storing new vehicles in. So he may sell all of his new vehicles on the site and then he'll have plenty of space there and then the next week to, you know, trucks show up and delivering new vehicles and now he's out of space.
And, and it was mentioned that the and who knows that this trend will continue. But the trend currently is almost, almost just in time delivery. If people order their, their vehicles and they, they show up, it's the days of car dealers having a sea of cars that you can choose from. Maybe gone. It is gone now, maybe gone forever. We don't know. So that was all part, you weren't here, but that was all part of the discussion and and just to bring you up to date as to what the type of questions and issues that we were talking about.
Right.
I mean, the, the modification standard is the plan result is equal to or better than what the code is. I think the summary of the discussion, at least from the last meeting, was that a want is not a need and I'm not sure. We aren't sure really that increasing the pavement and therefore the stormwater requirements for this plan. Just because they want to be able to store 10 more vehicles and theoretically they could with this modification really meets that bar. Am I characterizing that correctly?
I mean, that was all part of the discussion. Yes, it was. We, we fully admit we've done it before. We've granted two to ones before.
I, I'm confused. Your letter says you have a total of 145 spaces, not 110.
Well, that's combining the dealers.
Combining the, yes. It was the service, service vehicles in the rear. So. Can I?
And they did exclude the five EVs, so they're not considered.
I mean, yeah, they're, they're comfortably over them.
Can I, can I offer this as maybe sort of a point of discussion? We are here for preliminary plan approval. We did it this way because the car history, whole business is in a little bit of a transition. And prior to purchasing this property, Mr. Bazey wants to make sure that he can put cars here in a way that he would like. And I think if we said to him, he has preliminary plan approval for no modification, but with 100 units on this 100 storage facility. Plus the other parking. But when he comes back in for final plans, whether that be in a year or two years or three years, whenever he comes back in, he will hopefully have more knowledge and specificity as to what his condition will be. And the opportunity to ask again for that modification, I believe would still be open to him. You're not under an obligation to accept it as if it was granted at preliminary, you can ask it at the final. But am I fair to say that he can ask that again at the time of final?
And you can ask it whenever you want. Like he could come in for a grading permit tomorrow if the development was done and ask for a modification request, but it would go through this body in town council. So.
And, and it's always the town council that makes the ultimate decision. So.
He, he won't be grading until he comes back through with final land development. We understand.
Regardless, my point is that you can ask for a modification request for any plan. Whether it's preliminary, final or combined.
Yeah. So I think that I'm hoping he will be comfortable with the fact that for today's discussion and where you're probably not going to grant the modification if I'm reading the tea leaves. But that he does have that opportunity at the time of final plans to be able to ask again. And I
As far as I know, you agree.
I, I mean, let's legally, he has the ability. Can I base a business decision on assuming we're gonna say no today and yes tomorrow, you know, but yeah.
I, I think everybody can accept that he's gonna make his business decision on what you grant him today at preliminary. But as the world does change, we can ask again. And I sort of put this out on the table also so that if we do come back for final and we ask again, it's not because, you know, it's, it'll be because we know more about what the situation is.
I think that's fair.
Yeah. Think there were some engineering items.
Yeah, there was one item from the geotech engineer that he felt one of the parameters used for the material was a little bit higher than he's used to seeing. So he just asked for some backup on that before he could provide a technical, you know, recommendation on, on the two to one slope for that.
Unfortunately, the engineer who was dealing with that was sick and off yesterday, so I couldn't get a response from him.
Okay.
When I was walking out the door today, I saw their response letter, so I have a response letter. They have answered both that question and the geotechnical questions. There were a couple of geotechnical questions.
Yeah, yeah, related to like the Kiway. Okay, great. Yeah, that was the information that he wanted to take a look at before he could be, you know, comfortable and, and understanding that background that that they had assumed in there.
So I'm hoping that you will want to take action and make your recommendation, subject to us having a response that is acceptable to you, but having my read what our engineer is telling us, that I feel comfortable that we will be able to satisfy your concerns.
There are still some stormwater concerns over there.
That they, they were also in his, in his response letter. He's covered all of those elements.
Say from the stormwater side, it's the, those two items, both the release in the pipe and then the subsurface impacts are the two items that I think on our end would be the, the biggest things that we wanted to see addressed, just to make sure that the downstream townout system and the pond downstream aren't gonna see additional flow as well as the two down, two to three downstream neighbors who live aren't gonna see any impacts from any subsurface flooding, just given what we were seeing with the bedrock locations and the infiltration rate. We just want to make sure that that's all being looked at holistically and we're, we're looking out for those neighbors as well.
Again, KU has given me that response. I have it. You'll have it tomorrow when we sort of type it up and give it to you.
So you don't have an engineer's evaluation that they accept the response.
What I'm hoping is that you will make a recommendation that it be on and that prior to a formal action by the council that we will have fully satisfied Gateway.
And we have done that, have we not?
I mean, I'm under the impression that town council has requested that these be pretty buttoned up by the time they get to that.
So, all right. So is your recommendation that we do not move on that until we have seen here the answer? Is that what I'm hearing?
I would prefer not to. I'm only one member. Those are, those are fairly significant engineering concerns from my perspective. If, if it has not been documented that downstream properties won't be impacted.
They have, I'm sorry. They have documented it, just not to their satisfaction with the words that they used originally.
The original submittal you thought had documented to their satisfaction too. I'm not trying to argue with it. I'm just saying that engineers disagree on things, just like attorneys disagree on things and we're gonna rely on our engineer.
And I'm asking you to rely upon her at the time of the council approval, if that is possible.
I think that there is a there's a solution to looking at the pipe capacity because even if we review it and we say, okay, we have to do a downstream analysis, for example, I don't know, you know, what it's gonna show. Maybe it'll come back and I know we had asked last time that the, the rate was higher than the preconditions at one point. And it came back as engineer had acknowledged it and from our standpoint, we want to see that rate drop or we want to see the impacts downstream. So both of those can be done. It's just going to be what has to be done. Worst case, if there's a pipe size increase in one of the pipes downstream. I would be more comfortable if we can see the response for the stormwater infiltration rate itself because I do want to make sure that we're not adding any runoff into the bedrock and then having any subsurface flooding issues on that hillside. That's the one comment that we just don't want to have to face any sort of resident issues or just, you know, neighborly disputes in a few years because of what we're seeing downstream. And I know we've seen that in a few other areas in this municipality and other municipalities where we'll put in, I know like underground systems or systems like this that may not act as designed or intended. So we just want to make sure we're covering our basis on that one.
I have a question actually, maybe.
Oh, the only way to prove that is you build it. You can, you can have all the engineering you want. You can, you can go, you can go, you can say all the things and we can calculate them and you can do it. But until you actually dig that hole and you build it and it fills up with water, it's your best guess. But you can't be absolute. I mean, just.
It's all design work. I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. So we, we know that we're not gonna cause an impact to the neighbors and I would hate for there to be anything in the future with he said, she said, they said, them said, and dealing, dealing with something in that situation. So.
Question. Have we been looking at the stormwater design based on if you get the grading modification request and there's an increase of pavement? Or have we been looking at it as, you know, built to code by default? Or is that really not that much of an increase that it matters that much?
So we looked at it with the slope modification because that was what they had analyzed as their total impervious area. So if it did reduce and the stormwater stayed as it, as is, it would be okay because there would be less impervious area going there.
And it seems like if the intention is regardless of which way it goes now, to come back and ask for it at final plan anyway, that probably it's smart to keep it designed at conservative.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any comments from others on the commission? Oh, yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, Shelley. Now I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Sorry. I, I just have a statement. I have said this before. I think that planning commission in years past not involving any of you guys, but has sent far too many things to council without them being as fully vetted as they should be. And right now I think that there are too many open questions regarding the stormwater management. And that obviously also speaks to the slope modification request, more paving versus less paving. This is adjacent to a fully developed residential neighborhood that many of the properties sit well below this property. And I don't think that we should even preliminarily approve this plan until we are, until and unless we're completely satisfied that the water flow off of this current site does not exceed current rates and that all the calculations are fully vetted to ensure that the hundred-year flood storage management design is completely adequate. Because this is potentially, as I think someone mentioned, a future problem in the making if it isn't done right on the front end. So that's my comment. I would vote no to an approval this evening.
Thanks, Shelley. Now, up here, Al, anything?
I, I've heard everything. I, I'm not leaning towards the two to one. I would lean more to the three to one. I, I know 10 spaces are important to Schultz, but I, I just don't see why we would do the two to one at this point. And I wouldn't do anything until the engineering report come back. I, I just, that's, that's, that's big enough issue that concerns me.
Brennan?
The two to one modification, is that integrally tied to the 110 spaces versus the 100? Such that if we were to say two to one will grant you that modification, but it can only be 100 total spots, not 110? Is that something palatable or is it tied?
They're tied. Yeah. You're gonna build the two to one and you're gonna pave out to it. So it would take it to the 110.
John? Just a couple of comments. I, I would say that the sidewalk modification to me is very reasonable and, and I would, I would vote for it if we were voting today. I, I haven't heard enough between last month and, and this and today to, to really have a good justification for the, the two to one slope. I understand that the geotechnical report would, would suggest that it's stable and I have no issue with that, but as far as the actual need for those additional 10 spaces, I just haven't been convinced of the, of the case for there yet. And, you know, as far as the motion overall, I mean, I, I kind of pretty much agree with, with what Shelley said. I think it's, we're still a little premature, in, in my opinion, to vote on that.
Jonathan?
I, I think my, my thoughts are the, the same as, as what's been expressed. I think that the code is based not just on what's possible, like, yeah, it's possible to do two to one code, but, but should we, when, where, when to reserve the right to, to, to grant that? I don't see a compelling reason to, to grant a modification on the sloping. I don't know if, does it make, would it make sense to, to vote on like B and C and not the final one and then?
Yeah, I'd say that usually those are done.
Ian, I don't know. Have you already said your case? Okay.
I mean, I think, I think at least you can make a reasonable assumption about where the modification requests are gonna go at this stage, even if we don't vote on the whole plan, you know?
I, I certainly can read the tea leaves on that one and I appreciate your open comments on that. The question I would, and I also see where we're headed on wanting to table, come back on January 3rd. So my question would be, where are we relative to the time clock and do I need to grant you an extension?
Yes, this goes, I think it's number 29, I want to say.
As you said last time.
Yeah.
Gonna need the extra.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna need to get through January.
Thirty days has September, April, January. Does it, January has 31?
We all do the same thing.
Okay. When, when did we learn that? Fourth grade?
Council meeting that would have the planning items next month is the 22nd.
22nd. I, I just like to go to the end of the month. So for the record, I'll follow it up with a, a written letter tomorrow. We hereby grant you a, an extension until January 31st for the review of the preliminary land development application. And tomorrow we'll get our engineering response to you and hopefully there's anything. If sooner you can get back to us in case there needs to be any further dialogue would be most appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Victor, I think you could read the tea leaves and on all the issues and appreciate your
Thank, thank you.
Thinking it through. Yeah. All right.
He can stay standing right there though.
Are you up again?
I have reason to go away.
Unless you'd like to sit down first.
Thought I didn't know if you had to say something else, but if not, I'll just stay here and if we go to the PowerPoint, Chris.
All right. We'll go to item number two then, which is the continued discussion on the Walnut Court Phase Two Land Development. We had many questions about the plan that was presented last time and I'm guessing now that you've got some new thoughts.
And so the commission just came in today, so this is not something that would have been in the digital package. This is new today, but they have a no plans yet, but.
And we're not looking for a vote by any means this evening. It is simply just to show you where we have shifted slightly and to give you some of our comments and how we can respond to some of the engineers' comments that were brought forth last time. If you remember, I designed the original Walnut Court. And that when Donnie bought the additional piece of property, he just went to the engineers and they drew something up. And so that's so following last, following last time, then I was asked to take a look. Donnie, Paul Seer and I have been working to look at it ways that we can address the engineers' comments and some of your thoughts. So to that, I just thought we'd do a little quick little PowerPoint for that. So.
Please do.
All right. First.
Can, can we have that forwarded to us?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll put it in the Dropbox. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry. I don't think I got it to you like tell.
It was this morning.
Maybe after lunch. All right. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see the original drawing that had seven townhouses located on what was described as a private street. In the plan change, we have reduced that to six townhouses on a shared driveway for that access in that area. So it's the base, the basic element is that we've reduced it by one unit. And part of the reason is that between the cul-de-sac and the first, our unit A, there is a 30-foot water line easement that Mr. Paul thought could be, you just easily relocate a service line. Turns out Westview put in a full six-inch water line and they're not moving it. So we couldn't build a house on top of it anyway. So that's why we pulled back and we have the seven units. Next slide. Next series of slides, you're gonna see a comparison with the original plan on the left and the revised plan on the right. One of the engineer review comments was that the detention facility, a tank, needs to be 20 feet away from a property line. You can see where the blue outline is where the engineer had previously placed it. We can easily, under this configuration, place it in a different location and can comply with that. So that concern will be addressed and can easily be addressed. Next slide. One of the other comments was that the code requires that if you are grading a slope that exceeds 15 feet in height, it must be kept 20 feet back from the property line. And there were several locations on the original plan that the slope configuration was higher than 50, 15 feet and was closer. Part of that was how the stormwater was being handled. And so by just reconfiguring some of the stormwater, making it all detention, et cetera, that we have kept all of the slope heights under 15 feet. So the 20-foot setback restriction is no longer applicable. Next. The geotechnical report had all two to one slopes. That was used because the original plan had all two to one slopes. But in the reconfiguration, we were able to look at it and find a way where the majority of it can all be three to one slopes and only use the two to one slope where it is absolutely necessary or the physical constraints become most tight. And that is at our entrance driveway there, there is a higher elevation next to us on the abutting property. And so in order to be able to make that transition within that area, it is necessary to utilize a two to one slope within that area. So any modification that we would have would be limited to just that singular area for our two to one slopes.
Do you have any idea what that distance is?
It's a little, it's about the same size as the cul-de-sac head and that's 80 feet.
Okay.
So it's not a, you know, it's a, a minor area within that area. Next slide. The next one had to do with the definition of whether it's a street or a driveway. The original plan was envisioned it as a street. And when you call it a street, it means then you have to deal with cul-de-sac lengths. And it was only 241 feet long. Didn't meet your 250-foot minimum for liquid fuels. You're never gonna go for liquid fuels on a private street anyway. State doesn't allow it, but I think practical from a townhouse perspective, because we design a lot of townhouse developments. This would be classified not as a street. The street would stop at the cul-de-sac head and that this is simply a shared driveway to serve that singular building. So.
That was quite a concern. The concern was that the length of the cul-de-sac was too long.
No, it's not a cul-de-sac.
Asked to, to provide.
Do we want to, do we want to do this now or do we want to wait until we get through every slide?
This is the last, this is basically the last slide.
Okay, let's do this.
This is basically the last slide and you've got.
Okay, so let's, so let's, let's do this. To put a lot off of anything other than at least 20 feet of public frontage requires a modification request.
We have one.
The two options are on a residential court or in a planned development with an acceptable means of access other than frontage on a public street. And I'm confused as to why I would have had any regulations on street design written into the new SADO. If we could just call whatever we wanted a driveway to do an end run around those regulations. Can you tell me more about that?
If you look at the definition of driveway in your Uh, if you look at the definition of driveway in your ordinance and the definition of street. There is a significant overlap between the two. You could take almost anything and call it a driveway and you can take almost anything and call it a street. I think that's.
This is not wide enough to be a street.
Right.
It, your definition of street doesn't require it to be of a certain width. If you, I mean, I can read the definition if you like.
Certain way, yeah, so the. The state of Pennsylvania requires a minimum width for.
Public streets.
For, yes, for.
Public streets, this is not a public street.
Assumption in our code unless we grant a modification is that the lot must front. On a public street. Now, I understand that the rest of the road is a private street. And so that presumably, although it was under the old code, that presumably also required some sort of modification. Because we still required public frontage on streets in the old code, um. I mean, it's nearly identical, but we just called it a different name, and I I just don't, I don't. This is creative, I'll I'll give it that, um. What I also am wondering is where the fire truck is going to turn in this plan.
Uh, I'm not the fire marshal. I understand this evening I might be in in front of one, but. Uh, from what my minimal.
The fire marshal is not present.
Yes, but she she declared herself earlier than our conversation, fire chief.
Fire chief.
Fire chief.
An air, an airport fire chief, not structural, sorry.
Let me tell you what my experience is, that when you fight a fire, you don't pull the, you don't pull the fire truck. Right up to the building, you stop short. If there's a fire in here, you're stopping at the cul-de-sac, you're hooking into the the hydrant that's at the end of the cul-de-sac, and you're dragging the hose down. There's six hundred, there's six hundred.
Is he ain't approving anything that doesn't have a fire truck turnaround again.
Anything.
We can get it in writing from him if you want, but I feel fairly confident that I can speak for.
Doesn't turn, if I have a personal single family driveway, he doesn't turn around in it.
You're operating under the assumption that we are going to approve the completely discretionary modification request. To just turn a private street into a driveway here.
I want you to define it as a driveway, yes. Not asking it for a modification until you make me say it's a street.
Okay, so to address the lack of twenty feet of public frontage for each lot. When I presume Mr. Paul wants to subdivide them as he has for all of the other buildings, because that requires a modification request.
Yes, we can either do modification or I'm gonna watch him cringe on this one. We have frontage, this is a condominium lot, it's all one building on one lot.
Are we not subdividing these ones, Don?
What's almost condo? We have to eventually.
We have. We have one building, one lot, we have frontage.
You know, the fire truck is never gonna fall in front of that building, and he's never, even if he could turn around, even if we gave that says turn around. At the end of that building, they're not gonna do that.
He's not gonna pull a million dollar veh- well, a three quarter of a million or a million dollar vehicle right up to the scene of a fire.
Could you, we. That you provide the length of the current cul-de-sac, do you have the length of the current cul-de-sac?
No, I di- I didn't realize that was one of the questions, because I wasn't here.
That we asked.
Okay. You know, Don?
That I think it's right at eight hundred feet or eight hundred.
Okay, and eight hundred feet is what the code says. Is the length of a cul-de-sac that would be acceptable to town standards. Primarily for emergency access, not just fire vehicles, but also emergency access to be able to get to those properties. If there were a block in that drive, in the road, in the cul-de-sac, the concept is for public safety. So calling it a driveway doesn't change.
I said, quick question, is it, is this part of the new ordinance?
Yes. Yes.
But but this, you can't apply the eight hundred feet to now an eight hundred and forty foot long cul-de-sac.
Not asking, I'm not suggesting that we would apply it to the existing development, we're looking at a new development. That now has an eight hundred and forty foot cul-de-sac.
Okay, yeah, agree. However, before I forget this, I just wanna quickly come back, where is the public frontage?
Uh, this lot will.
The private street.
Public frontage.
Yes.
Now, I wasn't thinking in terms of public, you had me on that one. I was taking it as a right of way, because there is a right of way there. You're saying all lots. Must have frontage on a public street or.
Fact check myself, it's a new code for me too.
I assume that's under the Saldo. Or is it under the zoning?
It would be Saldo.
Okay.
Every lot shall have a minimum of twenty feet of frontage along the right of way of a public street. Every lot shall but on a public street with the exception of soonly designed residential courts. Or other planned developments having acceptable means of access, that is page fifty C.
I'm sorry, what section is that?
Eleven oh four point one thirty lot size and width.
Eleven oh four point.
One thirty.
One thirty. Is there a subsection?
Right here. And uh. Yeah, sufficient frontage is the minimum width required to say the driveway in the property, actually. In accordance with the design requirements in the section, zoning ordinance, and other appropriate state, federal, and local regulations. I guess we do mention a driveway in that one too.
That mean I'm okay?
No, I don't see any public frontage.
Okay, I thought though it went on, you said public frontage and then you went rather quickly and I didn't hear. Exactly what you said about a plan.
Page fifty on the PDF, but we actually have this in E code now, we have the Saldo side in E code, so you can actually just pull that up. In the new part eleven on the website as well. Okay, back to the plan, I mean, look. I don't think the goal of anyone here is to make this thing undevelopable. Certainly not mine. I'm intrigued by this solution, but it still requires modification requests, um.
Let's.
And I call it, it still looks really weird.
What's that?
Some cul-de-sac still looks a little weird.
Why is that?
Have you ever seen a street come up, well.
Absolutely, all the time. We do this, have done this a a bunch of times. You take, you go to the end of the cul-de-sac and you pull a series of tail off of it to serve townhouse developments, absolutely.
Driveways, yes, yeah. Um, okay.
So, but.
That was my comment, so.
Your opinion after reading that is still requires a modification.
Do you see public fronted?
No, but you said some few words after that that talked about plan development, said or, and then you s- didn't quite un- didn't understand.
Yeah, a residential court. Um, which this this driveway right here is not, um, or.
You saying that cul-de-sac head is not a residential court?
I'm saying that this driveway is not a residential court, although, hey, you know what? New information to me if we're not subdividing these, because that is not how the rest of the plan has been dealt with. And I was not under the impression that that's not how this would proceed, but.
I I think that if given a choice, we would certainly do it and fee simple as opposed to condo. But where there has been conflict with other communities. With uh regulations, it's not uncommon that you would do a condominium.
I'll have to take a look under that assumption.
Um, if.
But I still don't see, I mean. Off of a residential court, we'll take a look.
I've got a question. When this was reset, you know, you know, as you know, RJ, I was gonna come up with this many, many months ago, like you said, wait, we're building through our rezoning. And you might as well just wait until by the time you get this rezoned to R three, it's already gonna be R three or whatever the code is. What did the town think this piece of property would be used for when they rezoned it?
I don't do the design engineering for applicants.
No, I'm saying, what was the intent of the, you know, when this was rezoned to to be used as townhouses, so that.
Well, you know what, maybe that was our mistake, maybe we should have kept it as RL. But regardless, it's not the town's responsibility to do due diligence on sites for applicants before we zone something.
I'm just.
That's my response. I it's not the town's responsibility to do due diligence on site design for applicants.
There are other uses allowed in R three.
Well, not, in the old code, it was townhouses or parks.
Right, but, and there.
But it was also R two at the time.
Right, there also potentially could be other access to the site.
No, there isn't, there's no other.
It'd be tough.
Realistically on this site, no, it's gonna come off of the existing street.
It has no frontage other than right here and uh. You've written an ordinance that says, again, that says all lots must be on a public street. And you've created, I think it's true his point, you've created a lot here that doesn't have any frontage, so. I mean, it's, it it becomes a little little fuzzy there, you would.
What was the access to the lot previously?
There was a long driveway, was there not, and then it was given.
I mean, that it it was a buildable lot previously, it had access to a public street.
Out, it act, it had access to this.
No, it had an easement through Walnut Court, that long drive, long dirt driveway, see, Walnut Court.
And so when wall.
To fill me in, because I was not here when we did phase one, was that also how that single resident? Got out of that full property before you acquired the.
Yeah, all the construction, he he proved the construction, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, that is one house. But good to know.
I I think we've got some technicalities here that are either a real.
Uh, in this particular case, it's in the Saldo, so the only relief that one can get is through you and the council. Uh, this isn't something in the zoning that we can go to the ZHB and try to get some sort of determination.
There was a previous plan provided that did. Offer a cul-de-sac, it wouldn't be, but offer a hammerhead, it didn't have as many units. So there may be a developable, a developable, excuse me, might use my words tonight, um. Potential for this property, it just may not be as being proposed.
And. Following that, the uh. Size of that hammerhead. Should be subject, should be designed to be consistent with the fire needs. So could I request that the fire marshal please give us this, the appropriate turning radiuses necessary? And we will see if that could be designed.
Although, I mean. If we operate on the assumption that the driveway is okay, which I think. Based on the information of you're not potentially gonna subdivide these, if that's what it takes. We can take a look at this again, at least under that context, because.
Yeah.
It's where the plans went before, um. I mean.
As I, as I think that through, I don't think that's possible.
Subdivide, not subdividing or or sub.
Because you have twenty seven units in it already, now now you're gonna create a condominium within a townhouse plan.
Yeah.
And it's just gonna be that, you know, I don't think the residents there would be too happy with that. And then what's your responsibility to they have?
Yeah, I mean, that.
That would get very complicated.
That's it. If it were a driveway, you're correct, that it would be very unusual to require a driveway to be able to accommodate. A fire truck turning to play. However, if we are subdividing. That, I mean, we we talked about it when we were drafting the Saldo. About not even allowing more than four lots, period, off of a private street when we were entertaining flag lots or private streets. You know, with them at all, and we're looking at six, I mean. That's tough, it's modification requests do not necessarily set legal precedent because they are discretionary. However. This would be a bit out of character for anything we would have approved even before we had this more restrictive code when it comes to a driveway rather than a street. I mean, look, I don't vote, can I just read the code and tell you guys what it means, but. Um, I think I, I think. We certainly need to take some some more time to take a look at this, and this is only concept plan, so you know. Depending on what we get in an actual plan set, but I mean, I feel like I've talked enough, do you guys wanna do your thing?
Last time, last month, uh, a big issue was the length of that. Street, the end of the cul-de-sac, and who set? If it's eight hundred feet, I don't remember the number, but if who set the eight hundred feet as the longest length that it could be? And what was that based upon? Because part of our concern was this was gonna take it beyond eight hundred feet under the last design. And it by a couple hundred feet, as I recall, and so what what caused that eight hundred feet to be the determination?
Yeah, so I mean, it was just part of when we.
Was the number of lots that could front on it the maximum, what what you were talking about, we were looking at. The maximum number of lots that would front on the private street.
Well, no, that was.
I don't think it had to do with the number of lots, it was just the length of that street was an issue.
The length was based on talking with the fire marshal, looking at other codes, looking at best practice recommendations for how long. A dead end really should be able to be, um, I was shocked that we didn't have one in our old code. I've seen anything from seven hundred to a thousand.
But the state doesn't require something, so this is, this is our number arbitrary, if.
You know, we call it arbitrary.
No, it's it's a number that we selected, so.
Yes, it is a number we selected.
And alright, so. I I'm just thinking out loud here, but part of the concern last time was we were exceeding the eight hundred feet. So if if we liked the design last time, except for that eight hundred feet. Could we consider an extension to the eight hundred feet? Is that a better solution than a private driveway off of a public street? I don't know.
I mean, they kinda look the same.
So so you're saying like that cul-de-sac ripping out, continue the road towards the end of the plan.
Well, they weren't gonna rip it out, but they were just gonna continue.
I mean. Put put a road in there, put a new cul-de-sac at the end and put more lots.
Modifications and what they had last time.
Or you leave the things as is, the cul-de-sac where it is, instead of six townhouses here, maybe you have three driveways and three units. At the end of those, you know, around the cul-de-sac. I mean, as as independent structures, right, and that you would you'd have three units instead of four, so.
I don't feel all duplexes, Don.
The uh.
That's what he's asking, basically.
A second ago, you were talking about extending it and building the cul-de-sac.
And and that'd be modification request to extend the.
The road, but if you could design the cul-de-sac to the spec, then at least that would be the only one left.
But the cul-de-sac, we're really talking about an eighty foot diameter cul-de-sac, or are we really talking about a hammerhead? Because if.
Plan that was presented before was a was a hammerhead, but you were talking about a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yeah, ripping off the current state cul-de-sac, continuing the road and just put put in the cul-de-sac, moving it over. And that way you have, you know, the the townhouses.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, where the current cul-de-sac sits. If you were just to replace it with a extended street right of way, there's not enough depth to.
Oh, okay.
Because of how the property lines are squeezing together to be able to do in that cul-de-sac space to be able to put anything. So if what you said, let's keep the existing cul-de-sac and let's extend it and build another cul-de-sac, well, that cul-de-sac takes up a hundred feet. Plus, the setbacks from that would mean that you probably would have a single duplex in there or maybe a triplex. You're gonna come nowhere near to the uh six units that we were talking about.
Alright, this is.
I mean, it just doesn't make any economic sense to that to to even attempt that.
If the length of the street is based on mostly on safety, is that correct?
Wait. Yes, um. Continue, I'll bring this up in a second, keep going.
Well, uh, my point is, you know, most of that plan. You know, not most, but a good portion of it only is loaded on one side. Loaded on one side, and we're only talking about, if we were to build six units here, we're only talking about thirty three units. On this street. I know there's many, many, many other streets in this town that were thirty three units and.
Yes, blows my mind that this was not previously.
Why it was modified.
Um. The question. Switching gears a bit, but just looking at this. Um, so we've got the property line here. What is this setback? In this concept plan?
Uh, it's only measured from the cul-de-sac.
No, no, the property line, the setback of the building.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't apply. I don't know, you're probably, you're probably telling me that the, there's a rear yard setback.
Well, this would be a side yard setback.
Uh, which one?
You really would want it to be a side, if you want to.
Well.
All right, that wouldn't be a side yard setback, and that would be.
It would be a front under this plan, which makes it worse, so.
Well, we have a thirty foot, uh, uh, water easement right there, so we meet the thirty foot setback, which is bigger than what's on the other plan.
The thirty.
So.
Is that the line? The property line, oh no, excuse me.
Property line on that side of the easement?
Well, this, the right of way, the, the property line that's there will go away and will create a new one, so that's.
Oh, well, then that would be helpful.
You're talking about.
Yeah.
Pardon?
That would be helpful to know, because I mean, you can't really.
You can't tell from this, because we have. The concept, but yes. Uh, the question I would raise when you're going there is, what's the rear yard setback? Because that's the dimension to the side of F. That we would have to comply with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not terribly concerned, I think it's forty feet.
Uh, then we won't be able to have unit F. Because that's not forty feet.
Okay.
Okay, so, under. And.
Yes, indeed, and your front is twenty five.
Yeah, twenty five is not a problem, because we'll measure it off the cul-de-sac right away.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
Because you're moving the property line.
Okay, are you moving the property line back to the sold property?
It's.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. It's.
Yeah, but back to the last unit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over here.
Yeah.
That's all common space, from the center to cul-de-sac to unit A is all common space.
And you have the right to.
Yes.
Subdivide, manipulate that.
And you paid. The rec fee in lieu, right? For these? I think, I think.
I think so, I, you remember seeing something?
That that wasn't like in, in the open space easement, and I don't think it is, I think you paid the fee in lieu. So. Okay. Okay.
Is A running in this concept right along the waterline easement now?
Uh, one foot off.
One foot off, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't see that line up from here.
It's hard to see.
It's the.
Very difficult to see the easement line, because.
Is that where you drew the black line and then?
The, the black line was the. Lot.
The lot.
The single family house was.
Yes, yeah.
That's the, from that.
Right.
Toward the cul-de-sac was the thirty foot.
Yep.
Waterline easement.
Thank you for getting me oriented on where that was in there.
I'm. It's still sketch plan, so it's, doesn't have that clarity that you'd like to see.
I think we've gotten at least some new information from some of the assumptions that we had. Last month. Um. That subdivision thing's gonna be a snag at best right now, but.
Would be the functional difference if instead of six townhouses. It's just two single family lots. With detached, single family houses. Wouldn't most of the issues presently discussed still be there? But absent the density that comes from the six townhouses?
Um.
Because you still wouldn't have frontage on a public road. Fire trucks still wouldn't. Be able to turn around and. Driveway to house A, house B, now, I, I think that. When you have a structure like this, a fire truck has to get down, because if they gotta go up on a roof with a ladder. You, you gotta be able to do that. But I think in terms of the general. Developability of this area. Is it a question of the density, or is it a question of the underlying mechanics that, that causes the concern?
So, I mean, I can at least speak to. The code difference. Um. So. Part of the need for the modification request, I mean, they're, they're just piling up. Under both the hammerhead configuration and this one, especially if they're going to be subdivided and sold fee simple. Um. For a single, for single family homes, especially since we're now talking about this, the, like, the lot consolidation is in play, I imagine the driveways would just come straight off the cul-de-sac. And I think we have a limit as to how many lots can come off of the cul-de-sac, yeah, but it's not, it's not that. It's, it's not too, so, um, you know.
So it could only be five units under that?
Uh, it's single lots coming off the cul-de-sac.
Well, they're proposing to subdivide, so.
So.
Sounds like we could, yeah, theory, if, if we could do five units. Directly off the cul-de-sac, we would. Would we still need the modification because these lots?
However, I think in that case, it's a lot. Easier to swallow when we're not creating like a weird stub street thing coming off of an existing cul-de-sac and getting this, you know, you will let, you potentially. Eliminate the length. Of the road modification, or if you don't eliminate it, it's a much lesser degree.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you. Would. The front, the front yard, the front and rear, like, all the setbacks are still the same, whether you do single family, two family, or. I don't know, you know, that's something that's gotten much easier to deal with in the new code, is that you have a lot more room to run regardless of which type of unit you choose. Um, I think that, the, the. Private, having lots come out on a private street, I mean. With it actually being designed. As driveway is coming off of a largely compliant street. That's again, easier to swallow, because that's something that we did. For the whole length of the existing road, it's just that when you need like six modifications. To be granted for the design of, of an ex, a street extension. That's one it. It, it's a bit much.
So, we would, under this scenario where units would face onto the cul-de-sac, we'd be looking at a singular modification.
Maybe, I mean, without having actually seen the plan, you're getting much closer.
How, how you can configure the lots to meet the lot width and.
Yeah, the topography.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, yeah, my. If it, or, or they don't all have to be single family, maybe two of them are duplexes, I mean, it's, I think it's just when, when you're not dealing with this stub. That really extends the length of the functional street, it'll, that's my opinion, I don't vote, these guys are the ones that vote.
But.
That's just my perspective.
If, if, if we had. A series of townhouses that faced. A townhouse building with units on it, and they faced the existing cul-de-sac. We would only need, there may be a two to one slope modification, I'll throw off to the side, but in theory, we only need one modification. To, uh, the fact that we're not. Uh, fronting on a public street.
Maybe, I mean, we've got, haven't seen the actual dimensions, I think we're getting closer, and that was kind of what the group. That was sort of what you all were questioning about with, I mean, I know you weren't here, you know, but.
When you say dimensions, if it was a certain dimension, we no longer have to comply with the public street requirement?
Oh, I'm just saying that it would be really premature for me to say you don't need any other modification requests.
But it definitely would need that modification.
Yes.
For that, okay.
It would.
But it removes the.
Yeah.
Stigma of, if that's the right word, for the s- street extension, driveway extension.
Yeah.
Where the fireman's gonna fight from. How big the hammerhead has to be, et cetera, et cetera.
Prelimarily, that's my perspective.
Alright. Are we talking about? Taking those units? And turning them, rotating them, and creating a arc that they then face the cul-de-sac, is that how they're gonna face the cul-de-sac? Because I'm not sure how you're, when they face the cul-de-sac, I'm not sure what you mean.
You just turned that ninety degrees.
Okay, alright, or, could you? Yeah, ninety degrees or?
And I'm not sure you're gonna be able to arc them, because we run out of topographies, we talked about. And.
I always thought that would help the topography, but maybe it makes it worse.
We also have the waterline easement, so we have to stay perpendicular to the waterline easement, so that's recludes the arc aspect of it. And it would be most efficient just to run it as a straight line. But. We need to, we need to look at the.
See, that's, that's impossible.
Right.
Because if the waterline being the main line is, they're not allowed to spill water, we're talking about it like that.
So it's gotta be a straight line.
Try to go out of there.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so.
What else can we build?
Uh, you can do single family duplex or townhome. In this code.
No apartments.
No apartments.
Okay.
Apartments are mixed-use districts now.
Okay.
Um, but I mean, I think. Really. My main concern with both iterations of the plan has been. The length of this street and the fact that we are really trying to get away from having very long dead-end streets for a variety of reasons. And I think something that gets us much closer. To the cul-de-sac with a shorter driveway is more in the spirit of the code.
Okay.
When it comes to looking at modifications.
And perhaps multiple driveways off the short cul-de-sac rather than.
Yeah, the way that property is already developed, I don't think you have an opportunity to pull. Between the topography and the waterline.
Yeah, so that was, that was the one that's challenging.
Okay. Plus, appreciate the discussion, uh. Is there a timeline?
February meeting is the last one, you're gonna make it to under the existing.
February planning commission.
Yes, um.
We'll, we'll be.
Our town has a six-month limit on extensions in the new code, so. Work fast.
Okay, has this already had one extension?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, this is your. Second meeting.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll be in touch with you and. Uh. If extensions are required, we, we'll work with you on that.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright.
Thank you, good comments, appreciate.
Thank you, thank you.
Open discussion on that, and. Happy holidays, everyone.
See you, Don.
Okay, we're, we're on to item number three in the agenda. Um, we need to approve the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Yeah, I was gonna ask if there are any edits or changes or, uh, new comments on the, on the minutes. Not hearing any, can I have a motion to approve? So done, second.
Second.